Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 21st Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Officer Fiscaldo, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge will be to the flag. 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 To the flag.
Anybody here tonight to speak at citizens' input? Okay, do you have anybody online?
Nope.
Okay, great. Okay, so we're going to move right into Town Manager Recommended Budget. We're going to have a presentation by Paige and Brandon.
Mostly Brandon, but I'm here for moral support. As you know, just for those watching at home, Marie did have her baby last Tuesday. So she had a healthy baby girl, almost 10 pounds, one ounce shy of 10 pounds. So mom and baby are doing great and they're home now. So Brandon has been doing, picking up all the slack and more, so we really appreciate him. And Brandon, I know Marie set Brandon up to do this presentation. I'm really, like I said, here for moral support. As you know, it's required that the Town Manager prepare a balanced budget by this time, so you have it in your budget books. And Brandon's going to give you just a few highlights, it looks like, here. But we're here to answer questions if you have any questions after. So Brandon, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. As Paige said, I'm filling in for Marie for a couple of months to kind of get off. This process started. We're going to take a look at the fiscal '26 budget. Looking at that, I figured it'd be easy to break this process into essentially three chunks. Looking, one, at the updates to the fiscal '25 budget and kind of where we stand as of, I'm sorry, hopefully you can all hear me, as we stand as of earlier in January, sort of what's included in the fiscal '26 budget and sort of what the next steps are for the upcoming process between the Select Board outcome and other committees as well. So if we get started, let me change the slide here. Oops. So we get started, I just kind of wanted to give a quick update based on some numbers that Marie and I ran for the fiscal '25 budget. So taking a look at the general fund revenues, which you can see up on the screen here, the town as of January 10th, which is about 53% of the way through the fiscal year, just looking at it from a timeline basis, has collected overall about 53.2% of its revenue. This includes property taxes, which are coming in at 51.3 or about $32 million or so, about 67% budgeted so far in collections for local receipts, which is about $7.7 million, and state aid is coming in at about 49.7%. So taking a look at sort of our past trends, this is about 5.3% higher than where we were at the end of December of last year. And taking sort of a picture at property tax and state aid revenues, this is sort of relatively stable compared to where we were looking at previous fiscal years. So that's that slide there. So if we jump over on to the expense, sorry, I'm getting used to being in the driver's seat now, the expense side, this is kind of where we are as of the same cutoff on January 10th for the general fund operating budget. So we're about 49.8% overall, and that's a little bit under kind of where a timeline would be if you're cutting off at that 53.2% time period for the fiscal year. Departments over this time period so far have sort of taken advantage and used some of their grants to offset some of their expenses. Some accounts, if you look at, for example, insurance and other are appearing slightly higher. If you were to look at where the budget stands from a timeframe perspective because of, you know, the sensitivities around when certain payments occur, I believe the town during the beginning of the fiscal year often pays its pension assessment right up front, those sort of things that kind of come along with that. So overall, 49%, almost 50% expended, and that's about $43,645,000 compared to the original budget of $87 million. So jumping over to the fiscal '26 budget overall, this is just kind of a brief snapshot of the overall operating budget when you're considering the general fund, the water and the sewer enterprises, which are the town's self-sustaining accounts. So if you look at fiscal '26 and compared to fiscal '25, the overall operating budget is about a 5.11% increase, and that is about a $4.9 million increase or $4,934,555 increase compared to fiscal '25. And you can see here, on the general fund side, that's a 5.38% or a $4,721,128 increase. And on the water and sewer side, that's a 1.25% and a 7.16% increase compared to fiscal '25. So part of the overall increase does include the addition of new debt service on the general fund budget. Looking at what our financial advisors prepared, that was a $1,502,875 increase to cover essentially the three main projects that will be borrowed later this year. That's the DPW expansion, the 76 Main Street and the new community center project, and the police locker room expansion. In addition to that, these increases also include costs rising from utility increases. There's also onboarding of additional funding to support the cleaning of the community center, and of course, unfortunately, some growth in fixed costs related to group insurance and property liability. Based on what we included in the budget and recommendations from our advisors, group insurance is estimated to come in at a 12% increase and a property liability increase of about 10%. So if you were to look at the budget over the, essentially, a 10-year period, this chart here essentially shows a compound annual growth rate. So if you were to take the overall budget increases from year to year and sort of smooth those out, the municipal budgets, which includes your general government accounts like finance, the Town Manager's office and so forth, public safety, public works, human services, and culture and recreation, which is essentially our library, that's about a 3.85% increase. On the school side, it's about a 3.05% increase over those 10 years, and that includes not only Foxborough Public Schools, but also the Norfolk Agricultural School and the Southeastern Regional School District. And then if you take a look at the town's fixed costs, that's about a 5.53% increase year over year. And again, that's your group insurance, your property liability, your pension and your OPEB-related costs. And then, of course, the debt, that's both within the levy limit and outside the levy limit. So that's about a 2.33% increase year over year over those 10 years. So looking on how the fiscal '26 operating budget will be funded for the general fund, this chart here just gives an approximate breakdown, looking at the different funding sources that go into the general fund budget. So the largest portion of that is the tax levy that goes along with that, followed by state aid as well as our ambulance fund and water and indirect costs. Just to provide a little bit of clarification, these indirect costs are essentially the charge-back portions of the general fund services that, excuse me, I should say, the services that the general fund provides to the water and sewer enterprises. So that includes not only a portion of the staff times from folks like myself in finance, but also to, also the corresponding insurance charges that kind of go along with that that support those funds. On the ambulance fund side, that 2% for fiscal '26, that essentially supports a portion of the fire department's firefighter and EMT positions, as well as the costs associated with the ambulance billing and pro-EMS. If you look as part of the funding plan for fiscal '26, it does still continue to include free cash. Fiscal '26 does include a $665,000 use of free cash to support debt service related to some two-pass projects in conjunction with overlay surplus. And that is something that we have also tried to continue to pare down as we go through the fiscal '26 budget process. On the fire stabilization side, these funds are also used to support mechanics, the one mechanic position, and some of the supply costs that go along with performing the outside maintenance, and that's all folded into this pie chart here. So if we go over to the fiscal '26 general fund side, again, this is a breakout, just kind of looking over at a high level of the general fund expenses. The majority of it is supporting the education costs for the Foxborough Public School system, as well as the two smaller assessments for the Norfolk Aggie and the Southeastern Regional School District. Expenses are followed up on, sort of size-wise, by public safety, excuse me, insurance and other, and then public safety and so on. So if we switch over to the town's two enterprise-related accounts, that's your water fund and your sewer fund, this is just a quick snapshot of the corresponding revenues and expenses. The water fund is essentially generating fund revenue from the water user fees, which is about $8.3 million estimated for fiscal '26, and planning to use about $256,000 in water retained earnings, which is sort of like your equivalent of free cash for the enterprise funds. One thing that's also happening as part of this in the debt service there, which is making up about 36.5% of the proposed budget in fiscal '26, there are a couple different items that are falling off, which I'll go a little bit further into detail. Salaries make up of 25% of the proposed budget in fiscal '26, and then on the operating expense side, which is covering supplies and materials and so forth, that's about 38.5% of the budget. And sort of following the same pattern, this is a graph and a chart that shows the fiscal '26 sewer budget, breaking out similar to the water side, essentially the water, excuse me, sewers' user fees, which are about $2.9 million and about $64,000 in proposed sewer retained earnings, which is, again, similar to your free cash. On the sewer expense side, operating expenses are proposed to be 84.6%. As part of that chunk of funding, this also includes the annual assessment to the sewer system, which is proposed to rise by 5.85% compared to fiscal '25. And that's about, in total, for that line, a $1.2 million or so budget. So to provide a sort of another lens into the fiscal '26 budget, this slide, you know, essentially provides another surface-level look of where the town's budget is increasing sort of at a programmatic level. If you look at the total operating budget, which includes the enterprise funds, again, this is the $4,943,555 increase, which is about 5.11%. You can see that the majority of the increase, at least from a percentage point of view, is hitting the debt service. Again, that's the onboarding of the three projects, which will go out to borrow later in this fiscal year. And then education costs and insurance are the two other main drivers in the fiscal '26 budget. And just to provide a little bit of context for the enterprise funds, that's about a 2.44% increase compared to fiscal '25, when you're taking into consideration water and sewer activities proposed for the year. Again, just to provide some context to the programmatic areas, the general government portion does include, you know, essentially your accounts from Select Board through Sedentary Maintenance, that's folks like myself in finance, legal services, town clerk, and then you also have breakouts for public safety, which includes police, fire, the joint public safety building, and CEMREC in fiscal '26, and so on. With the education for the three accounts, human services includes health and the human services account in the budget, and then insurance and other includes your pension, OPEB, unemployment, group insurance, liability, reserve funds that support both town and school operations. So I wanted to provide a little bit more context from another point of view, looking at fiscal '25 and fiscal '26 from, I guess, the overall budget picture, to show where that 5.1% is sort of falling through, just a little bit more of a condensed view. So if you look at the general government line, which is the top row there, the overall town departments, met the Select Board's guidance of level service with roughly a 3% increase or less, the town departments came in at a 2.4%, a 2.43% increase, which was about $545,000 compared to fiscal '25. And again, taking a look, and similar to the other slides, the two main drivers are really the debt service and the other fixed costs that go along with that, the insurance and others. So if you see in the numbers from fiscal '25 to '26, insurance and others are rising by 9.17% or about a $1.7 million increase, and then debt service at that $895,000 increase compared to fiscal '25. So, sorry, one more breakout to provide a little bit of context to fiscal '26 numbers. So if you were to take that $4,943,555 increase compared to fiscal '25, again, this is just providing some context to where the main drivers are compared to fiscal '25. Again, the drivers in this case are education costs with an increase of 31.16% or about $1.5 million. Insurance and other costs are also going up by 1.7 or roughly 35.2% compared to fiscal '25. And then just giving a brief picture of those programmatic areas, when considering the entire budget of $100,731,808, it maintains sort of a similar trend compared to previous fiscal years, where education still remains a large portion of the fiscal '26 budget, followed by the town's fixed costs and other departments. So again, insurance comes in at number, insurance and other costs come in at number two or about 20%, 20.37% or $20,725,375 compared to, for this fiscal '26 budget. So looking at essentially what was folded in and proposed with the Town Manager's budget, there's a couple of different things going on in each of the programmatic areas. I just kind of wanted to give a brief summary of where the increases are coming from. So as I mentioned before, the general government portion of the fiscal '26 budget includes a variety of different accounts, with some of the increases due to proposed, you know, utility increases with new contracts the town signs during this fiscal year. There's a proposed increases in the fiscal '26 budget to cover some general toriel services that are needed with the new community center once that's up and operational. And then with the fiscal '26 budget, this portion of the budget also includes increased costs related to software renewals and just, you know, the overall additional funding needed to support the operational costs when it comes to supplies and other materials because of inflationary pressures. So if you're looking compared to fiscal '25, it's about a 3.71% increase. Taking a look on the public safety side of the budget, the overall budget is proposed to increase by 1.72%. That additional funding will support the cost increases related to police cruisers and as well as the maintenance and repair of various pieces of equipment for police and fire. The CEMREC assessment compared to fiscal '25 is also supposed to increase about $100,000. That is an estimate, we're still waiting to confirm numbers from CEMREC. And then as part of the accounting process with the fire department's operation of the outside apparatus repair, the fire budget, from a budget perspective, was decreased, but those funds will be moved into, back into the fire budget with Town Manager. That's that transfer from free cash to the stabilization fund, and then the stabilization fund to the fire department budget. And then on the education side, Foxborough Public Schools is increasing by 3.5%. That's in anticipation of contractual salary obligations, as well as their pending negotiations with a few different bargaining units, mainly the teachers. During this fiscal year, because of some out-of-district costs, one of the ways we have proposed to support those is establish a special education stabilization fund. In fiscal '26, I believe there was a proposal for about $950,000 in anticipated special education costs. So this fiscal year, or excuse me, this upcoming fiscal year, we're proposing to establish that stabilization fund and use free cash as a funding source to help mitigate those expenses for one year. My understanding is that the, there's a state formula that will eventually kick in for years, future years, to help mitigate those costs moving forward. Part of that special stabilization fund would essentially require both the school committee and Select Board vote, and any unspent funds would remain in the special stabilization fund moving forward. The other thing that's also going on within the educational budget is that the Southeastern Regional Assessment is proposed to increase by 7.2%, and the Norfolk Agricultural Estimate is increasing by 14.55%. Those are also both estimates. We're a little bit early with those numbers, we take it advice of the respective school administration to budget for those in fiscal '26. So overall, education is supposed to increase by 3.58%. So moving on to public works, there's essentially an increase to cover day-to-day operating expenses. Again, this is inflationary professors related to supplies and equipments and overall maintenance need. The funds in fiscal '26 are also proposed to support additional stormwater management expenses, engineering expenses, and roadway maintenance. And that's it for public works. So if we continue on from a programmatic view, human services experienced a slight increase of 3.1%. There were some small reductions in consultant services on the health budget and then veterans' benefits. On the library side, the library budget is proposed to increase by 3.02%, and that's to essentially meet the spending requirements set by the state, most of which is oriented towards remaking up or essentially bringing back individual library materials lines to meet the state-required formulas. And then switching over to the insurance and other, the town's pension assessment is proposed to increase by 4.39% based on the county's schedule that we received. OPEB funding is proposed to be level funded, and in this coming fiscal year, that's still maintained at $985,135 for the general fund. As I mentioned before, the group insurance costs are estimated to increase by 12%, and the property liability insurance is also estimated to increase 10%. Given that the overall increase for sort of this group of different line items is about 9.17%, again, the group insurance and property liability insurance are estimates, so those numbers are subject to change as we get closer into the February-March time period. Providing a little bit of context for the enterprise funds, these are overall, again, proposed to increase by 2.44%, the water fund increasing by 1.25%, and the sewer enterprise fund increasing by 7.16%. On the, this fiscal year's budget is proposed to include a reorganization of one or two positions with the establishment or sort of a conversion of one water technician into a treatment plan manager, and as well as additional funding to support the regional sewer assessment. And as part of the enterprise fund's budget, OPEB expenses are sort of budget in a portion there. So providing that is sort of an overview of the fiscal '26 budget, but I also want to, kind of wanted to bring to the board's attention and for those watching at home and the various committees, there are some additional things sort of going on behind the scenes. The town is currently in the process of negotiating, I believe, seven collective bargaining units. The budget in fiscal '26 includes what the town has historically approved, which is about a 2% COLA, plus the regular step increases, but the negotiation process is still ongoing. Thinking ahead to fiscal '27, one of the things that the town is going to need to manage is that the proposed pension assessment in fiscal '27, the county is essentially proposing to increase that assessment from '26 by $1.1 million, which is going to be a significant hit to available revenues in fiscal '27. So there's going to be a significant impact in sort of how we manage that moving forward. Again, similar to comments before, group insurance and property liability insurance is still a big-ticket item. Claims are still continuing to be high, and more likely than not, will continue down that path, and that's something we continue to be advised by our various advisors and representatives from those different program areas. Water and sewer, along with most of the general fund, is still experiencing inflationary pressures because of supply and equipment cost increases that we're seeing year over year. So when we take that into, all that information to account, you may question, well, how did we balance the budget? So this slide here provides, you know, essentially what happened during the Town Manager's review of various budget requests for fiscal '26. So proposing the 3% guidance, we had to make a series of cuts across a few different departments, and this chart just kind of summarizes that. So on the police department, Chief Grace was generous enough during our conversations to reduce his budget by $25,000 through some proposed savings and stipends. The fire department had some smaller savings. Part of their request in fiscal '26 did include an additional firefighter. The Town Manager's recommended budget did not include that, so there's the, a portion of that includes the firefighter, the individual firefighter, which was about $70,000, plus some reduction in sick and vacation leave buyback and some, a little bit of trimming in other areas of the budget. What is not reflected in this chart is, again, that accounting requirement that the state makes us do, which is that transfer into the fire department budget during fiscal '26 with that stabilization. That funding is used to, again, support the mechanic, as well as the various expenses and supplies and materials essentially needed to run the fire department's apparatus repair business. On the DPW side, there were some savings in overtime and some sick leave incentives and various expenses. On the health side, there were some cuts totaling about $1,300 or $1,318. There were some proposed savings from consulting services, which could be covered under existing salary budgets. On the human services side, there was a proposed reduction in some subsides, and then on the library side, there were some proposed reductions in salary and some several expense line items. So if we look at the operating budget, just going back a couple of years, this chart here just provides a quick four-year snapshot of sort of where the departments have spent in actuals for fiscal years '23 and '24 and fiscal '25, which is reflective of the adopted budget, and fiscal '26, which is the budget we are proposing. Similar to previous trends, education makes up a majority of that, followed by sort of the fixed costs that kind of go along with the budget. So if we were to look at the fiscal '26 revenue and expenditure overview overall, this is sort of a brief table about how the town is proposing to finance the fiscal '26 operating budget. So if you look here, fiscal '25 is increasing, if you're looking at just the operating portion, by 4.25% to about $105,611 and $604, which is about a $4.3 million increase compared to fiscal '25. Part of this tax levy proposed in fiscal '26, which is at $66,969,151, or a 5.11% increase in the property tax levy, that does include a conservative estimated new growth of $800,000 based on some discussion with the assessor and building inspector. To provide a little bit of context, that is a little bit a higher, well, it is a higher increase compared to fiscal '25 because the tax levy does include new additional revenue, specifically earmarked for the funding of the new excluded debt services related to three projects that, again, will be borrowing for later in the year. State aid is proposed to remain flat. The governor's cherry sheet will be coming out soon, hoping within the next couple of months, which will provide a little bit of context, but we decided to remain conservative for fiscal '26 in the off-chance that, you know, state aid has been state has, state aid has been sort of marginally increasing year over year. On the local receipt side, this budget proposes a 7.68 percent increase, or about $883,200 compared to the fiscal '25 operating budget. And then folded into that available/other category, there's a slight decrease, and that's essentially made up of free cash, overlay surplus, ambulance receipts, the fire stabilization fund, and the indirect costs associated with water and sewer and the recreation fund. On the expense side, town government, as you saw on previous charts, has proposed to increase by 2.43 percent, or $545,063 compared to fiscal '25. Education, again, also driving growth, is at 3.58 percent. That number, the $1.5 million increase, includes Foxborough Public Schools and the two assessments. The shared expenses, which, again, supports both town and school, are proposed to increase 11.85 percent, or about $2.6 million, and the enterprise funds are proposed to increase between water and sewer 2.44 percent, or $222,000. Just to provide a little bit of context for that decrease, I should have mentioned this, excuse me, earlier, with the, oh, excuse me, to provide some context with the other category, which is decreasing by 14 percent, or roughly $636,000, this is mainly due to reduction in proposed overlay use in fiscal '26. In fiscal '25, when the tax rate was being set, the overlay budget was increased to essentially capture personal property growth. This process is essentially capturing that as part of the property base in fiscal '26. So to provide a little bit of context to where the tax levy is going, this is just a quick chart here, just showing the historical, looking at fiscal '24, fiscal '25, and fiscal '26, and providing a little bit of backup to the numbers of the chart. This is the corresponding table that goes along with it. And sort of as I mentioned before, fiscal '26 is essentially built on last year's property, property tax levy limit of $61,867,256, taking into consideration Prop. 2 and 1/2's increase, that's about a $1,546,681 increase, and this budget in fiscal '26 includes a conservative estimated new growth of $800,000. So this results in a, taking into consideration the $2,755,213 needed to fund existing, as well as increase in excluded debt, that's about a $66,969,151, excuse me, $666,969,151, property tax levy, excuse me, got them tongue-tied. And overall, compared to fiscal '25, that's about a $3.2 million increase, or about a 5.11 percent increase. Again, that's a larger-than-normal increase due to the new debt exclusions. The property tax increase does include that dedicated revenue, and again, that's that $2,755,213 line there under fiscal '26. So taking into consideration state aid from the fiscal '26 budget, again, this assumes no change in state aid because we're still pending the governor's budget. With her budget, this will provide a little bit more context, so to play it safe, we're essentially estimating a 0 percent increase. If you, oh, lost.
Move away.
Yep. Sorry, one second, if anybody's watching at home. All right, it seems like we're having a little bit of technical difficulties. One second.
Park for the course. You didn't think you were going to get through it that easy.
So close, so close.
While we're waiting, does anybody have any specific questions they want to ask Brandon? What, you know, while we're, have this little minute, something he already spoke of, or just in case for a couple minutes?
So, actually, I have a list of them, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
The new growth of 800, I know you're saying it's conservative, but it's somewhat in line with previous years except for this FY '25. What drove that large increase in FY '25?
I believe, I don't know off the top of my head. I believe there were some increases related to, I believe it was some stadium-related expenses that came on board. I believe there's a couple of different subdivisions.
Oh, big, big end zone.
I believe that was taxable.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
Go to that last line.
As far as the, so when you said that the contracts that are on the town side that are, you're holding a percentage for that, but they aren't currently in those particular contracts right now, in those budgets, so that's why their percentages are lower at this point?
No, so there is a minimum of 2 percent plus step-up increases built into the budgets. There's additional funding elsewhere that will be used as part of the negotiation process.
I think one of the things we need to do is have a conversation with Southeast Regional because their increases have been pretty significant year after year after year. Saw this happen once in another town that I was in, and quite honestly, the three towns had to get together to have that conversation. Obviously, Southeast Regional is much larger. I think it's 27 towns, if I'm not mistaken, but it's kind of a divide-and-conquer scenario where they can kind of propose anything, but they need to get multiple towns to disagree in order to stop it.
Okay.
But we can't keep running, obviously, in, you know, this level with them.
Brandon, what's the dollar amount of those assessments? That was one of my questions.
Sure, one second, I can pull that up for you. So in fiscal '26, the southeastern regional is $920,634, which is that 7.2 percent increase, or about $61,855 dollar increase compared to fiscal '25. And the Norfolk Aggie is about $41,491, and that's that 14.55 percent increase, or about $5,200.
Okay. If you pulled those increases out, what would, how would that change the overall education budget increase?
I have to run the math, sorry, one second. Well, it should be, then it would just be the schools' budget, which is about a 3.5 percent increase, which is then the $1.4 million or so increase compared to '25.
All right, you know what, your screen's back up, so why don't we let you continue? Just in case we lose it, lose it again, or, and then we can hop back to questions.
Yeah, no, so Mark's going to run it from his place, so we'll just tell him when to scroll down.
All right, so Mark, if you can hear me, we're on state aid is the next one. Yeah, so one more, there we go. All right, so switching back to the funding conversation for the fiscal '26 budget, state aid is presumed to be at flat, at 0 percent. This, again, will remain that way until we receive some additional guidance from the state's cherry sheets. Just providing a little bit of context to kind of what we've heard from the state's side of the budget. So state tax collections, excluding the millionaire's taxes, millionaire's tax are expected to grow only by 2.2 percent for fiscal '26, and some of the things that we've also been seeing is that revenue collections have not been keeping up with their projections, so it's not looking good for state aid kind of moving forward, so hence our conservative-level funding of state aid for fiscal '26.
Brandon, could that number ever go down?
It could be possible, but we're hoping not.
Yeah.
So Mark, if, oh, sorry, if you will, so if you put it a little further down, so this is the state aid, just providing a little bit of context from the cherry sheets from the last couple of fiscal years. So in fiscal '26, we're estimating about $9.3 million in state aid, and again, that's level-funded on a conservative basis. So Mark, if we move down one more slide to local receipts, just to provide a little bit of a visual for local receipt history over the last couple of fiscal years, fiscal '24, excuse me, fiscal '20, '20 through '23 is representative of actuals, fiscal '25 is the budget, and fiscal '26 is the budget, fiscal '26 budget for this upcoming year. Just to provide a little bit of context, this visual is important because we've had some up and downs. Local receipts are not a stable revenue source, so taking that into consideration, the town has continued to maintain its conservative estimate for the, for future budgets, including fiscal '26. So Mark, if we scroll down to the next, next tab there, this provides a little bit of context to essentially what's included in our fiscal '26 estimate of $12,383,200. So you can see, if you look line by line, there's some smaller increases in motor vehicle excise taxes, increases in hotel and motel excise taxes, same thing with meal taxes. One of the things to keep in mind, as part of our local receipt history and sort of our, our patterns of actuals, they have been coming in higher compared to their original budgets because of various surpluses in line items. So for example, if you were to look at, you know, license and permits, over the last couple of years, in fiscal '22, there was a $2.4 million collection, and '23 was a $2.3 million collection, and in fiscal '24, a $2.1 million collection, but we're only estimating $1.4 million in fiscal '25, and $1.5, a little over that, in fiscal '26. We do that because these license and permits are not, the entire amount is not something that reoccurs every year. Again, these are not recurring revenues, so for example, if you had a huge building project, that building permit, for example, is not something you can count on every year. So again, our conservative estimate here of $1.5 billion for fiscal '26. Thinking about that, looking at our past couple of years, the five-year average was only $12,377,471, and that's sort of in line with what we're proposing for fiscal '26. Another one of those sort of classic examples is investment income. If you look at the actual history, we only collected, the town only collected about $60,000 in fiscal '22. In fiscal '23, $774,537. In fiscal '24, $1,304, excuse me, $1,304,112 in fiscal '24. And again, this is in part due to our skilled treasurer taking advantage of the interest rates and rocking in various CDs and so forth, and some of the earnings that go along with that, but we can't count on that moving forward without the risk of running some sort of structural deficit. So we maintain those estimates conservatively moving forward in the fiscal '26 budget as well. If you were to take a look to years previous of fiscal '22, the town was only pulling in roughly somewhere between $80,000 to $100,000 in investment income, so we don't want to budget too progressively without taking sort of past patterns into consideration. So again, in fiscal '26, we're only budgeting about $97,000 for the upcoming year. To provide a little bit of context, as well as the payment in lieu of taxes, which is the pilot agreement between the town and the stadium, there is a ticket increase, which will be going into effect a little bit, hopefully later this month. We're just waiting for some data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, but as of the last adjustment, the town was To provide a more clearer picture, part of the lease agreement included a $200,000 deductible for insurance covering the operations of the stadium, so the town was really only pulling in $1.3 million. So there will be an adjustment, hopefully within the next couple of weeks or so, but that is factored into the payment in lieu of taxes for fiscal '26. And just to provide a little bit more information into that number, the pilot does include essentially a guaranteed amount for a football and soccer seasons, and then it does continue to maintain the town's past practice of budgeting only six to seven concerts to maintain that conservative local receipt estimate. So if we move on to the next page there, this is just providing sort of a snapshot of what makes up the available funds portion of the fiscal '26 budget, is sort of, as well as the actuals that the town has used in the past. Just to provide some, some highlights, overlay surplus, and again, free cash are sort of two consistent structural deficits that we're trying to close with reductions moving forward. Free cash is sort of the big one, so you can see in fiscal '23, the town used $1 million. In fiscal '24, we reduced that by $200,000. In fiscal '25's budget, that decreased to $685,000, and in fiscal '26, we're continuing that decrease, trying to close that free cash use down to zero and proposing $665,000 in fiscal '26. So that's about a $28,000 reduction in fiscal '25. These two surplus, excuse me, these two funding sources, the overlay surplus and free cash, are structural deficits again, and these are used to fund essentially the debt service associated with Town Hall and a borough debt service that were, that were agreed to in the past. So this is essentially using funds to support those principal and interest payments. The small recreation revolving line, that $2,500 or so line item, that's essentially the Medicare tax for the seasonal workers, so we're just including that as an additional revenue source that the town's general fund will pay out. So switching gears, Mark, if you scroll down one more, is the indirect costs again. As I mentioned before, these are the charge-back that town does to the individual water and sewer enterprise funds. These numbers are also in fluctuation as estimates because of the influence of group insurance and property liability on these charge-backs to the individual funds. So as we get closer to, once the, closer to the town meeting warrant deadline, those numbers are subject to change, and the budgets will be reflected or updated to reflect that. So if we scroll down to the next slide, so this is, we're switching over to the third part of the budget discussion. So this slide here just provides some items for the consideration to the select board. So as part of the reconciliation process to balance the budget, the fiscal '26 budget does not include any new general fund positions. Projected revenues are not enough to cover these new positions, an additional salary request, and so for example, the fire, the proposed additional firefighter was not included. The police department did, did not submit a formal request for an additional officer, but there was some discussion around that officer for fiscal '26. The town departments worked with myself and Marie and the town manager to reduce their budget request to meet that level service with a incremental 3 percent increase. Again, the town is still looking to reduce its reliance on free cash and overlay surplus because, again, that's a structural deficit, and we're trying to avoid that growing any further. As part of the considerations kind of moving forward, especially given some of our considerations for fixed costs in fiscal '26, fiscal '27, and the future, new growth is going to be critical to managing those costs. And as I mentioned before, one of the things that the town and the school system are still going through is the ongoing contract negotiations for a new three-year term with various bargaining units. So if you look at the town's funding plan over its previous So if you look at the town's funding plan over its previous history, the town has been able to work with the revenues it has been able to raise. Foxborough has never had an override. Most, about three quarters of Massachusetts communities have had them in some form, based on what the, the state's database has been able to record. Out of the 25 that, percent that haven't had them, half are within the levy limit. And essentially this has forced communities like Foxborough to, to essentially tax at max and take advantage of its available property tax growth. To overall, to kind of sum that up, things are tight and again, because of pressures and how the, the Burrell and, and Town Hall debt service was structured and how that was funded in, in the past, there's the significant pressure sort of built into the operating budget and that's something we have to kind of contend with moving forward. To meet future expense increases, again, new growth is going to be, to key to provide sort of a additional property tax base to cover those expenses. Again, that's going to be growth in commercial, industrial and personal property, which results in a, a greater levy capacity for the town to support its, its costs. And to again, sort of sum up, and the town has done what it can to sort of live within its means. And we're seeing year over year, some very large growth in fixed costs that we're trying to manage with not only it's in the ongoing inflationary pressures. So if we move on to the last slide, which is sort of the, the next steps in the budget So essentially, I don't know if you all have a copy of the, the fiscal 26 budget milestone calendar, but there are a couple processes that are, are moving, starting next week. So next week on the, the 24th, we'll begin essentially the, excuse me, excuse me, the 29th, we'll begin the, oh, that's a typo, excuse me, the 22nd, next Wednesday, excuse me, is the start of the, the AdCom review process of individual department budgets. And those will run through the end of March. The select board will also need to take a vote. The two deadlines for AdCom and the select board. So by March 18th, the select board needs to provide its final recommendations on the budget. And then by Wednesday, March 19th, the advisory committee will also need to, to follow up with their recommendations. Sort of summary, summarizing the fiscal 26 budget process, we do still have a few of the larger items as estimates. So there are some subjects, some numbers that will change. The SEMRAC assessment, the Southeastern Regional School District Assessment, or Folk Agricultural School Assessment, Group Insurance and Property Liability and Workers' Comp are all sort of those, those main budget drivers where we've been recommended to budget higher with hopes that there may be additional savings in the future. The goal for us would be, if there are additional savings, would be to continue to reduce and meet the town's annual goal of about 100,000 dollar reduction in free cash each fiscal year with those savings. We will continue to sort of monitor the, the state's budget process and see what that might mean for state aid numbers and also monitor the, the overall construction and permitting activity that may influence new growth estimates for fiscal 26 as well. So I hope that has been helpful. I will take any questions if you have any.
Do you want to, you want to finish and then we'll move on to your study questions?
I think I'm good for right now.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. Dennis, anything you want to elaborate on?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the pilot issue. So 2024 was, looks like around, I can barely read these numbers, 3.9 million. The budget for 25 was 2.5 million. I don't know where we are year to date with that budget. And then the preliminary 2026 is 2 million, 2.9 million. So it's a big number there.
Dennis, are you, are you following his, his presentation?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if you were following budget online. I was going to ask you what page you were on so we could pop back to.
Just on the local receipts.
Okay.
History.
So to provide some context, I think with the, the pilot, there's a, a couple of different things going on. The pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes, the actuals for fiscal 23 and fiscal 24 do include some, I guess, higher than normal concert programs that have happened over the last couple of fiscal years. So I think what you're seeing there is the result of that. We've collected more than what we've budgeted. In fiscal 25 and fiscal 26, again, we're maintaining that conservative estimate so we don't get into a situation where we have a revenue deficit because of undercollected revenue associated with the stadium operation, operations. The, the 26 budget does include a, a payment increase, but we're waiting to see that the final numbers, once the, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which is the data that essentially governs the increase. So that will hit in fiscal 25 and, and impact fiscal 26.
But I think if I can elaborate, just having spent a lot of time talking to Marie about this, it is frustrating, you know, being in a community, one of the only, the only community in Massachusetts with this issue. You know, we do make a good amount of money off concerts. And, you know, I say that to Marie, it's like, Marie, you know, we have this concert planned and that concert, but she could just point us right back to the COVID year where we end up defaulting to, what is the number, 1.5 or 1.6 is our?
Yeah, 1.5.
I mean, Marie uses six to seven events in her, her projections, but she doesn't, and that's, even that's kind of going out on a limb. But anything beyond that, she's concerned that it's, it's not guaranteed revenue and if something were to happen, the town would experience a shortfall. So she does not feel comfortable projecting more than six to seven events at the stadium. And I think what Brandon was referring to is like Taylor Swift was a very big phenomenon that hit the budget and that was, you know, very high. Army Navy was unique and special. So we, we seem to get those, but then we had, you know, the year 2020 come along and kind of humble us all. So you can't ever say it couldn't happen. So I think that's, that is the frustrating part of being in Foxborough is you see all this money come in and we can't use it for operating budgets to, you know, to, to hire more police, to hire more fire. The money really has to go to, because it's considered non, non-recurring, can't count on it.
And I think to add a little bit of that, to that as well, one of the things that, that Foxborough doesn't have the ability to do is, in the previous community I worked in, the way we also funded capital there was through the use of the tax levy. Property taxes here are not something that Foxborough relies on and that's principally because there is no room in the levy and also that there are, are local receipts available to support that. So each year when we do the CIP process, we are sort of in a, in essence, counting on local receipt surplus as well as surplus in other areas of the budget to support that every year. Without, without that, the town wouldn't be able to, to meet its capital needs every year, year over year. So that's a critical funding source that these budget surpluses help support or revenue surpluses help support.
So said it a little differently. If you were to increase the number of concerts, you would be just putting those additional funds into the, the CIP budget versus into the operating budget. Effectively, that's the only way you'd be able to manage the CIP.
Or you'd be doing what other communities are doing and which is letting a lot of the capital slide. You know, I mean, that's what we see most, many community, Foxborough's been able to keep sort of up with it, but other communities are experiencing the pressures, not only in operating, but in capital all around.
And I think, you know, obviously no one predicted COVID, although, I mean, it's no secret, I like to run lean. I, I was like that on AdCom since I've been on this board. And I remember us, you know, a lot of times I would say, you know, what happens if the rainy day happens? No one knew it was going to be COVID and everything was going to shut down for almost a whole year. But I, I think that's why sometimes we do need to think about staying, staying lean because you never know what might happen. And, and I know it's unrealistic to just put, put the minimum in because we know there are, there are going to be, you know, other events up there. And, you know, I mean, I guess we could go just the lean as we could, but then I think we'd have all this, all this free cash then and the same thing. And the other, the other thing I think we, we need to remember is that $5 million that, that year that we got the opera money, I was the rep from the board on CIP. And that was like Christmas morning. Like we walked in and, you know, Bill said, we have $5 million and we have to spend it. If we don't spend it, we lose it. So it was like, you know, dump trucks and, you know, and vehicles. And we went from some vehicles that were Ford Escapes to, to Chevy Tahos. This, we went from 45, $40,000 vehicles to 80,000 plus. So, you know, I don't think, you know, it's only been a couple of years. I don't think those vehicles are, are coming up, but eventually they will. And then we have to decide, you know, what are we going to replace some of that stuff with? Because we had all this money that was just given to us to spend. So I, my thought process is as we go on, maybe the next five years, I know, I know you guys do a production much better than I would do it. This is what you do for a living. But I think we're, we're still going to, we're going to come forward to some lean years too, because now we're going to be replacing equipment that we upgraded because we, we had the money. Now whether we're going to go back to a lesser piece of equipment or we're just going to continue to replace those. So I think that, you know, there's a lot to, to think about in the next couple of years and, and what we're spending. The other question I had.
Can I just say something though, because of that point? I think in fairness, the CIP budget, the backlog in the CIP budget was very significant before that happened. So it wasn't just, we got, you know, boatload of money, let's have fun with it. It was, we had millions of dollars that kept floating out that we couldn't do, that we were finally able to do because of the opera funds. It, it wasn't just like, oh, we're going crazy here and we're going to buy, you know, Cadillacs and Mercedes because we can. We filled a lot of gaps through every department. I don't think there was a single department that didn't get some of the stuff that had been on their backlog list for years to bring forward. So I, I think that's, you know, it's not just, you know, we spent the money.
I would agree with you, Bill, but when, when there were a lot of vehicles that we didn't, just replace vehicles. We went from.
You may have gone up on a vehicle, depending on the use on it. I, I'm not going to say this stuff, but that wasn't the majority of the money that was spent.
No, I'm, no, but my point is, you know, there was a lot of money there and we were able, like you said, to, to, to hit pieces of equipment that had been brought forward the years before, that we didn't have the money. But those pieces of equipment will circle back around and we will not have the opera money. That's my point more than, I don't think we, I don't think we spent it frivolously. I, I, when I say it was like Christmas morning, it was that we were able to hit those, those piece of equipment that we were not able to hit. So I didn't mean it to come across that we, we spent the money in, in an, in a bad way. It was just that, that will circle around. That's, that was my point. And the other question is, Brandon, you know, it may be you, it may be, I see both chiefs sitting right there. It's a SEMRAC question, just, just curious. Did, did we have, I'm, I'm going by my memory and it's not always good. Did we have a certain dollar figure that we were going to be every year? Like I, I know, so I'm looking like we went from 300,000 to 450,000 to 600,000 to 700,000. Was there a certain, for some reason I was thinking like there was a certain number. Was that always going to be reevaluated?
Yeah, there was a five-year grant process that ended.
Okay.
That ended at 600,000.
Yeah.
I think it's been flat for a couple of years. And this year.
The last year we hit 600 and now, yeah, this.
Okay.
Last year. Was it six years before? I don't know.
Yeah, so we, we did have, we had, we had a mount at one point because of grant that we were going to pay and then that, that changed. And I was just, I was just curious because a lot of people, when, when we, when we went to SEMRAC, you know, there was a lot of questions about if it would be cost effective. You know, we were, we were lucky, have you been up there? Okay. We were lucky, you've been up SEMRAC? Probably. We were very lucky to get that tour a couple of years ago and how impressive it was. And then, so, you know, I, I remember thinking like, oh my God, this is worth every penny. Because it wasn't just about having somebody sitting in the station taking, taking 911 calls or, or calls. It was just like how, how extensive everything was. I was just, I was just curious, the jump, you know, and it seems like we were going up 150 and then it went to seven. So that's based on.
Seven's the worst case scenario. I don't, I truly believe it's not going to be seven. It could probably be in the neighborhood of 25 to 18, 25,000, but.
Yeah.
I know Rob's working on some other, other funding mechanisms too to keep that down.
Yeah.
But I think the 700,000 is the worst case scenario.
Yeah. Okay.
And just to clarify, for the next newsletter episode, episode or issue, I did ask, I looked into SEMRAC and just checked the numbers today with the chief. And we're looking at the savings of 5.5 million dollars since SEMRAC started. And that's in payroll costs and it's over 3 million in capital costs. So when Rob said that the town had saved over 8 million, I thought he was kidding. But it turns out he wasn't. The town really has saved money through this. So while the costs have gone up, it was a deliberate plan to, to take the grant in even increments as a group. And so it was a planned increase.
And I was going to look at, I was going to say on a different side of things before SEMRAC, we're, we're at like 1.3 million dollars a year.
Those are just salaries, not the pension assessment.
Right. So, so SEMRAC alone, you know, cut tremendously and that, that was six years ago. You know, imagine that 1.3 now, nowadays. So I could see how that could add up to 8 million dollars.
Yeah.
And I don't know why I remembered 1.3 million.
You're spot on.
But I'm spot on, right?
Well, yeah, and until you actually go in there and, and see it.
Oh, but it's, yeah.
Like, you know, how, how impressive, worth every penny. I was just curious, like just looking at the 300 and then getting to seven, I was just kind of curious if there was a rhyme or reason to that, if it gets, it's, it's an assessment, so every year they come up, would they come up with a number?
We're subsidizing that for five years incrementally.
Yeah.
It increased.
Okay.
And we are still looking at ways, like she said, to bring the costs, not only to level them out, to try to see if we could bring them down. So we are still working on that.
Yeah. But obviously Doc had that number said, so there's already a big, big savings.
Huge.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Whether you would be proud.
Thank you.
She's probably watching. She better not be.
Sure she is.
Marie, go back to your baby. Brandon's five. And I guess the only other thing I'd, I'd add, just like Deb, obviously this is your first, like town budget. You, you've worked on your own budget as a town employee, but I, I will say that, you know, in the past, if you do have any questions, obviously, you know, Paige, Brandon, would it, would have been Marie if she was here, any of the department heads are always very, you know, willing to, to take a call, go in and have a meeting. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Because, because it's a little overwhelming the first time you see it.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. No, but you know, you'll be able to, and, and for me, I think everyone has a way. I kind of look at that far right and I see if it's a big increase or a big decrease, that tells you something, something's going on, you know? And usually, and the other thing is too, the, the projected numbers, I, I learned, I, I believe it was sitting with Chief Kelleher, that I learned that the, each department has things that they do at different times of the year. So even if it looks like they weren't spending all your money, like you, you said to me, we order equipment in the spring. So when we see, we'd see that number and it looked like, you know, you were over budgeted by 300,000 dollars. You were like, yeah, by the springtime, you know, so every, every department has a certain time when they're, you know, they're spending their money, I guess.
There's nuances in the contract or, or required payments at certain times throughout the year as well.
Yeah.
So sometimes it happens in June, sometimes it happens in January. So yeah, there's a lot of things.
Yeah. So they're at your beck and call, Deb.
So Brandon, this book is available on the website, correct?
Yes.
Where did, where do we put it?
If you go to the Finance Department webpage, there's a Budget Book tab. In that tab, there's a fiscal 20, fiscal 26 Town Manager's Recommended Budget. This document should be up there.
So anybody can read along and see, read it. It's great for right before bed and if you want to scroll before, you know, it's good light reading.
Well, and it also, I, I know it's hard, but if you, if we can, you know, in a perfect world, AdCom would be televised. That's, you know, a discussion for, that nobody wants to hear on AdCom, but it, you know, it does, if we do get a chance to go, because the department heads will go there and give a complete presentation of, of their budget. And so we all know that if you can get there and listen to one, it's a, it's good. And the other thing is if, if we have any questions, the department heads have always been wonderful to come in here and maybe not give a full, a full presentation. and maybe not give a full, a full presentation, but to answer any questions, they, you know, so they, they'll come before us too, so.
Is the AdCom schedule posted at this point?
I don't know if it is online, but I can make sure it's up tomorrow.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, they start next Wednesday.
COVID stunk, but having AdCom televised during COVID was wonderful.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Or COVID again.
Bill, I'll send out-
Right to your time, Doc.
Send out a blast to the Select Board as well with the schedule, so you guys have a copy of that. But I'll make sure the, the schedule's up online.
Appreciate it.
We better hope remote meetings get extended, because as of right now, it's due to expire in March. So I think they will extend, but it's not something that's been done yet, so.
Forgot about that.
Yeah.
All right, great.
Thank you, Brandon.
Yeah, thanks so much, Brandon. When we don't, we're not active, we lose our, go off, all right. Okay, special town meeting. Okay. All right, so obviously there's, we're, we're talking about possibly having a special town meeting. We have a couple of, a couple of dates that are there. So right now, we have discussion about some extra funds for community center. Is there anything else? We, we may have, we may have another, another to add, but right now that's all we have.
I think with the schedule that we would have to take, being so aggressive, I don't think we put anything else on it.
Yeah.
I think it really would probably be a single-issue vote.
And if, and if we, if we do end up with just the funds for the community center, then, and we, we're still holding off till May, we'll just back up progress with community center, right, Bill?
Correct. Yeah, I think the, just so the taxpayers understand what this whole commentary is, is that when we originally proposed work on the, um, the community center, we used estimates that, you know, were our best estimates at the time. Sewer gave us a estimate on the extension of the line from basically the Commons down to Seventy-Six. That estimate was based on what was going on on Wall Street, which was a contract that had just been signed. The current estimate is almost double now, based on a number of factors. And I think part of that is obviously the connections for all the properties that go, you know, are off of it before it gets to Seventy-Six Main Street. The other concern we have is the elevator. Again, we haven't seen the final quotes or estimates yet, because they haven't been, the bids haven't been finalized. But if we don't do some, you know, proactive work now, then the, the project will shut down, assuming these numbers come in on the bids at the higher end. If they, if they were to come in miraculously by where they were, then we, you know, we'd probably be able to keep moving and then just do some minor tweaks after that. But the sewer project, if it comes in at four hundred, four hundred fifty thousand, there's just virtually no way that this, we can do that. We do have an option, which, I apologize, I wasn't able to get back to you today when you were on it, which is to actually complete or fix the septic system that's there. Personally, I don't believe that's the right move for the town in the long term. But if the town basically said no to funding the sewer connection, then that's the only option we'd have. The system did fail when we went to buy it. They did give us a fifty thousand dollar credit rather than fix it, because, you know, we felt that the sewer was the right way to go. But, I mean, it, it could be fixed. It's just a matter of what the cost would be there. So, and we, whatever money we dump into that is gone once we do a sewer connection down the road. So you kinda, that's a waste of money versus, you know, having the system right. And this, quite honestly, other than the joint public safety, we've been able to get all the other public buildings on town sewer. So it's a huge, you know, benefit to the community in the long term of having it, so.
Any idea what that, that cost would be, like a rough number?
For the septic system? Did you guys come up with any?
Well, we did. And Chris, you wanna jump up here? It sounds like it could be done relatively affordably. I mean, under ten thousand dollars is what Tony's thinking. And then Chris had some in-house solutions that might minimize our need to spend out, but.
Yeah, so I, I talked to the engineer who did the septic inspection, the Title V inspection. It failed because of roots in the line between the tank and the distribution box. That pipe was actually, that piece of pipe was actually replaced while the hole was open. Talking with him, the distribution box should probably be replaced as well. That is a two hundred and fifty dollar material cost. It's minor. The DPW could handle replacing that. At the same time, that system was designed and built, to our knowledge, with expansion system in the leach field. Those pipes have never been connected to the, to that septic system. When we replace the distribution box, we could make that connection. It expands the capacity. So it's a fairly minor repair. We could do in-house for fairly short money. I talked to another septic installer who said, you know, typically he would charge twenty-five hundred dollars for a D-box, distribution box replacement. So, you know, like I said, it's minor. If we do it, I talked to the Health Director. He said that we could apply for a system, a sewer, septic installer license, so that the town could do that work legally. We do pipe all the time. We have machines that we can dig. The Water and Sewer Department is capable of doing that. So even if we were to hire somebody, we're looking at probably twenty-five hundred dollars to get that system online. I do like, as Bill said, I think it's a short-term solution. But it does let us move forward with opening May first, May sixteenth, but getting people in that building on a short term, and then looking at the, the long-term solution with, with sewer. To Bill's comment, you know, every other, every other building, all the schools, including soon-to-be the Taylor School, will be on sewer. Public safety has, has potential in the future as well, with a sewer system down that area as well, which is, the long-term, the right solution for town buildings.
Yeah, and then, then if you were to then enter into the sewer project, would you then be having to shut the building down because of any work being gone? Not the building mean per se, but would that make it difficult then for the, the usage of the building with construction?
No, construction timing, we can, we can make that work. Generally, when, when you make a connection to sewer, you know, you're off, offline for a couple of hours. That system's a little more complicated, because there is a pump involved. There's a pump existing with that septic system. There would be a pump system. We can coordinate that, so it's, it's during offline hours. Although I know Mark is planning to use that building every hour he possibly can.
One AM aerobics, let's go.
Is there any concern if we're only using the first floor, that the, the size of the system can handle it?
So, looking at what the current senior center does, they only use about sixty gallons of water a day. I know that building is, you know, three times, four times the size, but even that, it's two hundred gallons a day.
What about with, with recreation in there?
I mean, we expect it to be expanded, but most of the time you, those, those functions, they're going in for an hour, maybe two. Chances are, they're not even using the bathroom, not using the facilities. There's a two thousand gallon tank in line with that septic system before it hits the leach field. So it's, it's pretty, I think it can be repaired and I think it's a, a good short-term fix. It lets us get the bid numbers for the se, the sewer installation and bring that to May town meeting. Hopefully, maybe get to the elevator numbers as well, so we can finalize all those estimates.
If that's the case, if we can do it for ten thousand or less, I would say we do it and drop the special town meeting at this point. And we'll just have to squeak to get as far as we can and get that first floor running. Because that's virtually of the money we were looking for. That's two-thirds of it. And the elevator itself, we're not gonna have to put money up for quite a while, because by the time we get the bid, wow, okay, you can't really sign the contract, even though the equipment won't be available. So, do we have a timing on when we think the bids for the elevator and?
It's currently under review. If I recall, the, the estimate that we worked on, there was still about five hundred thousand dollars remaining in the current borrowing article for that. The question is, I don't know if that's committed for other projects that need to be done before the elevator project itself. But my hope is that the elevator bid will be back within, to the town.
Okay.
Deb, you have a question?
Chris, if we do the short-term fix, the twenty-five hundred gets us in the building in May. If we were to not do that and go for the, the connection, when would that get them in the building?
So that being, it's, it's a funding issue. You know, the way the bid is drafted, we would have substantial completion, which means that the building would have to be connected by May first. So, you know, that, that alone may drive that cost up, because it's, it's a good timing, because it's the first thing in the spring. Contractors, I can open up the road early when they're not able to do other, other site work. But it may also squeeze the numbers higher, because, you know, it's such a short timeframe. We're not giving them, you know, two years to do the work. We're giving them sixty days. Which, the project itself, it should only disturb the road three weeks to put that pipe in. So they don't need a long duration to do that work.
That's not a deep dig, this is?
No, they're only going five feet. So they're not, you know, typical sewer system, you have, you know, eight-foot deep manholes. You're running gravity, so you're following the pitch of the road. This one's gonna stay five feet. It's, so it's a relatively easy dig.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
Anything, Deb?
Trying to get a feel for the elevator number. I mean, what are we looking at, ballpark?
I think in total, if I remember the budget correctly, it was two hundred fifty thousand. That included the elevator, sorry, the elevator equipment, which is, I don't know if there's a hard figure for that, but overall, the project is about two hundred fifty thousand, which includes the elevator equipment, the installation, and the building of the shaft to support the elevator.
So what we could do, has, the, the bid hasn't gone out for the elevator yet, right?
No, no.
So what you could, we could do is we could split that and, and, well, actually it's split, because the shaft is gonna be separate anyway.
Correct, yeah. The bid itself is just for the elevator equipment and the, the associated services needed to install it.
So, and, and the bid does have, what we've done on bigger projects in the past, where we were still having to go to front town meeting to get a vote, does the bid have in, in that it stays open until we can get to town meeting?
It, it will. I proposed that question to Town Council. They are working with, with me on that line, so.
We've done it a number of times. I think if we do it that way, we can build the shaft. We can actually accept the bid effectively in our minds as to which way we're going with it and build the shaft and cut, you know, a hundred fifty thousand, which would be the elevator part of it out for now. So I think there's a way to get away without the special town meeting, that if we, if you're really comfortable that septic system is gonna, for ten grand or less, will be up and running.
Yeah, no, and, and like I said, I talked to the engineer who did the inspection and he was, he was comfortable. He actually gave it, he gave it a conditional pass with those routes being removed in that section of pipe and that, that work's already been done.
And there's no concern about routes being in the, where the, the field is?
And that, and that's something we'll do when we open up the distribution blocks. You know, we'll put a camera down, we'll scope those, that, those four pieces of pipe and just make sure that. But I think the tree line's far enough away from, from those and where two of them have not been used, we should be in, in good shape to do that for short-term fix.
I'll take the way to go then.
Okay, so we'll move forward with the septic approach and delay town meeting and try to do this all at an annual or a special within an annual, but in May.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for being here for that. That worked out.
Yep. Okay, so we, what do we have up here next?
Somebody whip through this next one?
The notification of political party. Yeah, of political party. Okay. So Paige, you wanna?
Sure, so this was something brought to my attention a few months ago. And basically, there's a law in place that requires that the Select Board for each town to notify the chairpersons of the town committees, for Republican and Democrat, by April fifteenth of each year. And it lets them know that the chairs can submit a list of enrolled party members who want to be appointed as election workers. And so that, and that list must be submitted to the Board of Registars through the Town Clerk's Office by June first. So bottom line is, this is just something that you would vote to, to go ahead and do, per Bob Cutler's request. And then, we, well, I will go ahead and notify the chairs on your behalf and let Bob know that this has been done. It's really just checking a box. I'm not even sure it's ever been done before, but it's something brought to our attention, so we're, we're gonna do it.
So of course, I got a, I got a call to say, so this doesn't have any, this doesn't change anything for existing people who have been working, working the polls. This is just, if anybody is interested, that way Bob would know. So if he needs to fill spots, he has a list.
Correct, this is a checkbox.
That's what I thought.
It will not change anything.
Yeah, there was a little, little like, "My God, am I not gonna be able to work the polls now?" And I said, "I don't believe so," but I said, "I will ask."
There's a line waiting to do it, so.
Yeah, okay, exactly. Okay, all right. So do we have a motion there, Deb?
No, but I'll make a motion that the town manager, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, notify the Chair of the Republican and Democrat Town Committees that they shall submit to the Board of Registars, Town Clerk's Office, prior to June first, a list of party members who wish to be appointed election workers.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, Paige, you're up.
Okay, I'll go quickly. At six forty-five, before our next meeting, on, yeah, September, no, February fourth, we are going to have a little acknowledgement of Jay Barrows, so he'll be coming and a few members of the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative, anybody else who wants to come. It's, it's not a party. It's not anything. We have business to take care of, starting at seven o'clock. So it's, it's just a quick acknowledgement of Jay Barrows. So hopefully, everyone will tune in and if anybody wants to come, they're welcome. I spoke to Paula Hearn from Schneider Electric today, and he wanted me to let everybody know that they've torn down approximately half of their square footage now. It's about sixty percent complete. They're, he's so thankful of all the support they've received from police, fire, electrical, DPW. The neighbors have been good to work with. And in the next, in the next month or so, the buildings closest to Pontiff will be coming down. And they're hoping to be done with demo in March, but probably more likely April, given the weather. I was asked to note that Foxborough lost their last World War II veteran last Monday. Frank Baresi passed away and he was the last World War II vet here in town. Foxborough did receive nineteen thousand dollars in FY twenty-five firefighter safety equipment grant awards. And what's interesting about that is that the communities that did not pass MBTA zoning and were not deemed in compliance, did not receive those fire safety grants. So the, the state has doubled down and-
Just to say.
Yeah, it's very interesting. As we noted last meeting, the town meeting warrant is open. It's gonna close on February fourteenth, so it's only a couple more weeks to get articles in. As of last count, we had twenty-one. As mentioned previously, the AdCom budget meetings begin next Wednesday night on the twenty-ninth. And we do have a CIP meeting scheduled for March first. That's held on Zoom. Very big news for the region is that Costco is opening March twelfth. So watch your traffic, because it's gonna be interesting. It's gonna be a lot of traffic out there. And then Bob Capizzi of the Design Review Board has submitted his resignation. So after almost thirty years of service, there's actually an opening on the Design Review Board. So if anybody's interested, they should submit their applications. And then we did hire a Human Resource Director, Mike Mullin, will be joining us on May, no, February tenth. I just wanna get out of February clearly. So we're not gonna have much of a gap. Paige's last day is February sixth and we have Mr. Mullin starting on February tenth. We also have openings for firefighter, paramedic, part-time building custodian, a part-time recreational coordinator, and our three DPW jobs of equipment mechanic, laborer driver, and water technician. That's all I have.
Paige, just a question, why is CIP Zoom?
It's always been on Zoom on Saturday morning.
I've attended them in person.
Oh, maybe it's since COVID?
Since COVID.
Oh, okay.
They have no intention of going back.
They used to be in person.
No, yeah, but no, it's still, um-
It was on Zoom the past couple of years, so I don't know if the, it's, it's up to what the committee wants to do. I know last year I was traveling, so I had, it had to be on Zoom, but I don't, proper planning.
The year I, the year I was on, so that's after COVID, we met in person. I'm not, I'm not sure about the other years and stuff, you know, if we met in person that year.
We can talk about it if we'd rather.
Yeah, I'm curious about the Costco and the traffic and the lights. Has a comprehensive study been done to make sure that that's all gonna flow and work once?
Well, in theory, yes.
But it's Sharon's problem.
Especially going down that road.
That's a fact.
Not necessarily. I mean, they certainly went through MEPA, and they did all the environmental and reviews that MassDOT would require. That doesn't mean there won't be problems. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm sure it's been studied to death.
They did, obviously, they did a lot of roadwork right in that intersection off of 95, and there will be congestion definitely in the 95 on and off area. And to your point, I think it's still going to have people coming, obviously, from the Foxborough side, but our roads are a little bit bigger in that particular area than the Sharon side is. But if we had a lot of people coming through Foxborough to get there versus coming up 95, we will definitely face an issue that way, so.
I think it'll be messy for a while, I would imagine. Especially the beginning of anything is always messy, and everybody's going to try to go.
I think if you look at like BJ's over in Franklin, to be honest with you, it's, again, you don't see, there's not, you know, there's not backup. The first couple of days, there'll be excitement and stuff like that, but in the general day, when you go up there, it's not really a traffic issue.
Just try, well, you can only get gas at BJ's first thing in the morning or late at night, that's, I'll tell you that. And I'm sure Costco's even worse, so don't try to go anytime on a weekend.
Exactly. Yeah, our homeowners association is already panicked because, well, not even just the traffic, but we're responsible for our roads. We pay for our roads. When our roads have to be done, it comes out of our money, not town money, so the wear and tear on those roads, you know, it's, it's not a short, you know, that's long-term, you know, how many people are traveling and stuff. But also, people blow through the stop signs and stuff we have in there now, so with extra traffic and people not aware, so, yeah, this will, we'll see how it is, but like, like Bill said, I think it'll be that initial opening, it'll be crazy, and then we'll go from there. All right. Paige, did you have anything else?
That's it.
All right. All right, Selectmen's update, new business, I mean, I, I just, you know, we, you know, we love our Patriots around here. Have to say, welcome home, Mike Rabel and Josh McDaniel, so you know.
Is Josh official?
Yes.
He was there an hour ago.
This afternoon. So, can we confirm that? All right, well, Channel 5 said it anyhow, it's 5 o'clock, so anyhow, you know, nice to, nice to see that, that change. And the only other thing I just wanted, wanted to mention, I mean, she is the queen of Foxborough. I, if you're on Facebook, I know there was some talk about Joni Goodwin. She was in the hospital for a little bit, and she made it out to the Maples, and I inquired if it was okay if she had some visitors, so I spent an hour with her on Saturday, and she is the Joni that we know and love, at 90 years old, doing really well. And I told her I was going to give her a shout-out, so anyhow, nice to see Mrs. Goodwin's back on the mend. She is the queen of Foxborough after all, so that's all I have. Anybody have anything else for Selectmen's update?
No.
All right. Okay, action items, Deb.
Motion to approve the use of public way application for the Rodman Ride for Kids on May 17th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
I'll second, but there should be discussion.
Yeah, well, under discussion, because this is a repeat, we don't, we haven't made them come before us, they know the rules, they, you know, we kind of, so we, that's why we've moved it to action items, but you have any, you have any questions?
Well, the point is, it's now May 17th instead of, it's normally in the fall, right, I believe?
It's usually in September, yes.
Yeah, and, and the secondary thing is there's a Patriots activity that same day, so.
Yes, there's a soccer game, and I did check with Chief Grace and his team that they'd be able to handle both.
So just want everybody to be aware that it's not, not, it's sitting out there by itself, that's all.
Yeah, because the, you know, I mean, the race is early. We have 7:00 a.m. to.
Yeah, so we're also.
So, yeah, they're, they're off the roads, any, you know, they've already done their run, okay.
They better be off the road.
Anybody else, any other, okay, all those in favor?
Motion to approve a one-day beer wine application for the Rodman Ride for Kids on May 17th, 2025, for service from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at 38 Nupontsett Street.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the use of public way application for Bailey's Team for Autism on Sunday, April 26th, 2025, from 6:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., going down Payson Road towards Chestnut Street, left on Chestnut Street, right on Mechanic Street, right on Rear Road Ave, left on Bird Street, right on Baker Street, left on Chestnut Street, and right on Payson Road back to the start.
Second.
Any discussion? Again, this is a repeat, they've done this for years, so they know the drill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Stephen Kane, Daniel Fallon, Frederick Jones, Stephen McGrath, Paul Terrio, and Michael S.D. as constables for a term to end January 31st, 2028.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the donation from Alex Xandra Sanford and Daniel Peterson in the amount of $4,000 to the aid tree fund, to aid the tree fund.
Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, I need to take the second first. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve Select Board meeting minutes from January 7th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's the last one, right?
Yep.
Okay, next up, we have proposed pedestrian bridge discussion. We have Jim Cobery and Dan, oh my God, Murphy. I was like, I was going to say McGowan, oh my God. Dan Murphy here from the Craft Organization to go over. This is, this is something that we, we had already had some discussion about in executive session to hear about the proposed project, and the board has some questions.
We haven't heard about an executive session.
Oh, oh, not, not from them. So what I was going to say is that there were some other questions, and they had reached out and would like to come to the board and make sure that we know all the ins and outs of the project, and that's what leads us here today, so Jim, I'm going to let you, let you start.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to explain to folks how this came about and what we're hoping to, to work on together. So it came about rather unexpectedly in, in December. The prior administration and the U.S. government authorized a raise grant application process, and that usually happens regularly, but with the new administration announcing that they were no longer going to be spending money in the manner that people had become accustomed to, that suddenly became a particularly, you know, important application process. So the expectation is this, this application process is authorized, but there may not be any further applications authorized for this particular term of President Trump. So we were informed of this in December. As I think you know, we've been interested in doing this pedestrian bridge for a number of years, and so we, we were told that there was an application available, that there was money allocated towards it, and that this would be the last one for the foreseeable future, and encouraged to, to submit an application. Now, we as private parties cannot submit an application. It has to be done by a public entity like the town of Foxborough, and so that's why we approached you and asked you if you would apply for this grant, and we wanted to make this process as simple as possible. The grant is a grant that is a maximum of 80% of the total project cost, and as part of the grant application, the town, who is the applicant, has to explain how the other 20% will be funded. And so we plan to fund that extra 20%. We'd like to do it a little bit differently than just a straight payment, and I can explain that to you, but what, what we want to emphasize is that we are hoping that the town of Foxborough will apply for this grant. We plan to provide assurances to you that we will, we will provide the funding for the other 20%. We also understand that these grants are administratively very complex and that they don't have, I'm sorry, and that you may not have the resources in town currently to deal with that complexity, so we'd be prepared to take additional sums and add it to the project cost so that the town could retain people to actually administer the grant, and we'll pay for that additional cost as well. So we're, we're trying to set it up so the town applies, but for all practical purposes, we're the people who bear the economic cost beyond the grant money to do this project. We have done some estimates, and we understand that the actual bridge itself, with all the various hard and soft costs, will be somewhere around $35 million. The, the grant that we're hoping to apply for would be $25 million, so that would leave a gap of about $10 million, and we'd be prepared to fund that. That's the nutshell as to what we're doing, why we're doing it. At this point in time, what we're looking for is the town to authorize the town manager to go ahead and submit the application, and for, as part of that practice, or part of that application, for us to submit a letter of intent that basically describes the fact that the town will obtain the extra 20% to fund the project cost from the craft entities. So it's, it's, this is a many-step process. The first step is to submit the application. There's no guarantee that our application will be selected, but if it is selected, at that point in time, we can all get together again and firm up all the details to make sure you're perfectly content with how we're going to pay the extra project cost. But at this point in time, we're looking for a letter of intent and an application so we can begin the process.
So the secondary part of that is that, as you said, there's many steps, so even if we apply and we're to be granted it, if we aren't comfortable with the final, you know, process being the way we want it to be, we don't have to accept the grant.
That's correct.
So like any grant, you do an application, but you still have to accept it in the end once, once it's approved or not approved.
Time frame for submitting?
Has to be submitted by the end of this month.
That's what I feel we got.
And we, we have a group of people working very, very hard to get this done. The application is complex.
Want to ask a question, Deb?
I have a really simple question. Is it okay to do that? Is it okay?
Yes.
For a town to apply for a grant that's ultimately going to be used by a private entity? It's not making any rules or?
It's not being used by the private entity, it's being used by the public. It's the private entity that's backstopping our funding.
Right. Okay, so, same question, is that okay to do?
It's not only okay, it's very, very common, and so the grant proceeds will go to the town of Foxborough. It'll be used to construct this bridge, which will be a public asset. We will have an obligation to operate and maintain it, and it's, this is the way that most of these raise grant applications occur. I'd, I'd say it's the overwhelming way that these applications occur.
Thank you.
So, and, so obviously, Town Council, Jay Townman and Paige had been involved in many conversations, emails, and, you know, the board was able to hear part of this, and then Bill and I sat down with Council Liam Page and Jim and Dan and got a clearer picture, and we thought it was best for them to come before the whole board, so the whole board, it wasn't that if, say, Doc had a question, you know, maybe Bill and I could answer it by what we were told, but what if we couldn't? So we thought it was best that they came right here, so, you know, if anybody has any other, any other questions, I mean, you know, feel free.
So on a project, a building project like that, would our DPW Chair be running that project? Do you see what I mean? So it's a construction project, would his office and his staff be overseeing that project?
Yeah, the, the town would be the applicant, the town would be the grant recipient, the town would be responsible for overseeing the, the grant proceeds and the other project cost. And so I don't know how the town will choose to allocate that responsibility, but the town will have, will have that responsibility. And what we envision is that it's complicated, and you'll need to supplement your internal resources with some external resources, and we'll take those costs and put those into the project cost, and that'll be part of the sum that we pay.
Yeah, so.
So we would have to have engineer, our engineer in firms.
If Chris taps out and says, I need help, we could get another engineer.
He can't even tap in at this level, to be honest with you, so.
So it's, it's also entirely likely that, given the scope of the construction, that this would be a, like, fully outsourced through procurement, project manager, normal course of a, of a large public construction project. It's not just paving a crosswalk here, so it's more likely to take, it's probably a little bigger than we could handle internally. One of the items of discussion that we've had over the few meetings that we've had, Zoom, and then one in public, or one in private over here in Town Hall, was that we would get the help financially to support the soft cost side. They would be essentially underwriting that. The minimum qualification that we had to enter into this negotiation was that we wouldn't be out of pocket, and, and both Jim and Dan have stepped up in the last meeting that we had and said that that's the general theory behind it. How that unfolds ultimately at the time of construction, I think, is still in front of us, so there's a few steps that still have to happen. There's this letter. Jim sent me a draft today, I'm going to work with Paige on it. It's pretty straightforward, it's like, hey, here's what we're going to do in this grant application that's coming before you. Pretty straightforward, little bit of tweaking back and forth, we should be able to get that in shape. We need then to negotiate an agreement that's going to have contingencies with the Craft Group on that, a development agreement that allocates the shares, the responsibilities, all the other little terms and conditions of, of this agreement that'll be between us and them outside of the, the grant process. We're going to need town meeting vote. Assuming that it includes borrowing, we're going to need town meeting vote for that borrowing with an explanation on how that goes. Craft Group, again, is going to help support that because I think we know that that's going to need some support at town meeting. We also need a town meeting vote to deal with some of the land acquisition components of it, because we could probably load it into companion warrant articles or even into one warrant article, however we do that, but that's going to have to be a function of it, too. I've had an additional conversation with the town's bond council, who I know pretty well. I described the situation. Jim helped give me some information as to actually who would own the bridge, if it's a public asset, either ours or the state's. At the end of the day, that's good for the bonding, it wouldn't affect our bond rating at all. He felt pretty comfortable, he felt like all the component pieces were there, that he could help us on the borrowing side while we're working on the general deal terms, on the town meeting side, on the infrastructure side, the procurement, a whole bunch of pieces. There's a lot of things that have to come together. This is just the start of a lengthy process. We obviously are here, myself and my partners, to make sure that the agreement is amply protective, and we, we know the council on the other side is going to be doing the same on the Craft side, so there's a bit of negotiation still left to go on some of that. So this is just the first step. As Bill said, it's not, no one's hands are bound by this, this is just an important step to see if we can get in the queue.
And I think I would look at the management of this similar, a little different for some reasons, but like doing the Borough Project, where we don't manage, you know, we hire an engineering or architectural firm to, to do that side, if we hire an OPM, you know, to project manage the thing, and yes, you know, someone like Chris or our board sits there and listens to what's going on and has say, but we're not doing the day-to-day work on it because, quite honestly, you know, Chris's job is to maintain Foxborough, not that there, so.
We might have, I mean, we'll review things like we would do in any public construction project, change orders and making sure that contract is as tight as we can get. There's always a role for our DPW, for this board, for Paige, and for other people in town.
Quite honestly, we would expect the Craft Group to have people also sitting at that.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's, it's a, it's intended to be a kind of a communal effort here, for sure.
This might be premature, but the big question that we had was the funding and not having to commit any town funding to this initiative. Beyond that, you know, in terms of the residents of Foxborough, you know, how, what's, what's their benefit from this project? Because going to town meeting, that's really going to be what they're going to be looking for. How does it benefit the residents of Foxborough? Now, I know it benefits the stadium, people go to the stadium, and I'm a season ticket holder, so benefits me, but is that a conflict? No. But, I mean, what, what are the benefits to the citizens of Foxborough? And maybe it's premature, but I think going to town meeting... And maybe it's premature, but I think going to town meeting, that's what they're going to be looking for.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to suggest that these are all legitimate issues that probably at this point are a little bit premature. What we have to do in order to get to these issues is to submit the application and then be fortunate enough to be selected. And if we are selected, there's no obligation to take the money, but at that point in time, we should be able to answer that question very thoroughly.
And Dennis, I think there's a, a couple of component parts to that. I think there's some perks, there are obviously the public safety perks, which, which Chief Grace has, has spoken about on, on a number of occasions. There's some potential growth opportunities from a tax revenue base by having that there. That might be another perk. But the big one in my mind is that this is our minimum threshold to have this discussion. We're still working on and will work on for the, you know, next couple of months on an agreement that has the terms and conditions that would be hopefully the selling point if, in fact, town meeting is, could be persuaded that this is a good expenditure and it's a two-thirds vote. So it's going to have to be compelling and we're mindful of that.
When's the grant expected to actually be awarded?
I don't know the exact date, but it, it takes some time. It would be in the spring of 2025.
Chief? Chief, can you?
Actually, I was going to call him up, but then Jay kind of summed it up. I didn't, I wasn't sure. Mike, you, you kind of had your head down. I wasn't sure if you wanted me to call you up here or not, but you might, you might as well kind of tell us your feelings, public safety wise.
Well, that's a, that's, I can tell you, based on the current setup and the expansion of Patriot Place and how that whole area has changed, the crowd, pedestrian flow has changed. So the security model works all the time on all different routes and patterns, trying to mitigate pedestrian and vehicle interaction. The pedestrian bridge creates an open flow that doesn't have stoppage and that allows for a constant flow in, constant flow out, where we will keep the patrons safer, especially during night games and night concerts. It also moves the traffic on Route 1 without having to stop it for, over the course of over 40 minutes at some points throughout the release of an event, which mitigates traffic on the side roads. So there's a lot of benefits from the public safety. This is something that is not new and the Craft Group and, and the security model between us and the state police, we work on this all the time. If you've ever been up there, that's one of our concerns and how we mitigate this. So this would just build off of that. And this is really, when we talk about a partnership and we talk about government working with our partners, our business partners, this is a perfect example of where we could excel together to increase the product and the safety of the patrons from the license that we issue.
Chief.
Yep. Chief Kehler, any, any, anything, you know, you're the other public, the other half of public safety. I know, I know Mike kind of, you know, spoke up for both, both of you guys before. I know it's a joint, joint, you know, safety issue, but any, anything else that you want to add or?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay, perfect. All right. Anybody, any other?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, Paige, have you seen the application yet?
Um, I saw it, yeah, sort of. I mean, it's, I saw it on the screen share. It's, it's pages upon pages, so. Seen enough to know I don't want to fill it all out myself.
Well, in, in, in that, that's part of it. I mean, it has to come from Paige's computer. The application is coming from our town manager and I, I know she's been told there will be some help because it, from what Paige said, it's a, and Jim just said, it's pretty, pretty extensive application.
We have two groups working on it, one in Ohio and one in Washington DC. It's an extensive application. We're going to get it to Paige, give her an opportunity to review it and understand it and ask questions, but it has to be submitted from her computer and we have to be respectful of the ultimate deadline.
Yeah.
And the deadline.
It's actually next Wednesday because I'm out Thursday, Friday at class.
And this Thursday and Friday is the MMA show, so all of us municipal folks are generally out of pocket as, as well. So it's important that as soon as we can get paperwork and review, when we can review it is, is really helpful. I'll work on the letter of intent first with Jim and I'll, I'm happy to put some eyes on the application with Paige just to make sure it kind of matches up with our general understanding with the Craft Group.
And I just looked it up and the, last year, the raised grants were awarded at the end of June. So not be in time for a May town meeting, presumably unless we're doing it, anticipating it, but it, it would be outside of our town meeting cycle.
Okay, so Jay, if, if that were the case, we would either, you know, hold off till, till special meeting in, in the fall or we would hold a special. Does that, does that work or are we allowed to?
How long do you have to accept?
Yeah.
It's not a long period to accept. I don't know the exact dates, but I'll find out and, and report back to Jay.
The borrowing could be contingent in May. You'll get the most voices, obviously, from, from folks in town.
Yeah.
In, in a May town meeting. And we'd make sure that the article and the motions would have the proper contingencies in them.
Yeah.
And I, I think we will receive some guidance from our connections in Washington, so.
Yeah. Okay. So, so at this point, we could take, take a motion and a vote to approve, to have Paige apply for the town? If the board wants to have any other type of conversation, we could go into a short executive session and come back in. What's the feel of the board? Are you comfortable with?
I'd like to go into executive session for a few minutes.
Okay.
Not very long, but.
Okay. Perfect.
Exec session, just so to be clear, we're talking about the elements of it, the real estate elements on it, because there's strategies in and around the acquisition and the rights for the, over the real property. So the other deal terms that might be out there aren't really the subject of that. It's the interplay of borrowing relating to all of the real estate. It's all part of the same thing, but the motion to go into executive session would be a, a motion to go into executive session to just discuss strategy with respect to the acquisition or conveyance of real property interests related to the pedestrian bridge.
So, and, and that's why, Doc, I'm not sure that we need to do it because quite honestly, and I, you know, I respect if you want to, I'm happy to go there.
No, 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 explanations are a lot different.
There's nothing, we're, it's not, we're not going to be discussing anything on negotiations effectively.
Correct, okay.
At this point, because we don't know even what the piece of the property sizes are going to be, you know, who is the current, well, we know the current owners of the property, but, you know, so it's not like that's an issue that will come up yet. We will probably have to have, obviously, executive sessions in the future if it were to go to the point where.
Multiple. And, I mean, the motion here too, if it was to authorize Paige to send both the letter of intent and to sign the application, you could add a contingency at the end of that motion that essentially says, subject to further negotiation of development agreements with the Craft Group.
Which is fine.
Yeah. So and, and Jay, it sounds, it sounds to me, I don't want to presume, that you, you feel comfortable with us not going into executive session if we feel like we want to move forward the application process only.
Right. This is a, this is the smallest of the steps we'll be taking on this project going.
But I, I wanted to give everybody, everybody the.
We, we talked about it when we were, you know, discussing, but I wanted to make sure it was still on the agenda, if that component piece of it was important to the group.
No, I'm good.
Yep.
Yep, pause it.
Down the scent, Dennis, are you okay with us just?
I'm good.
Just voting? Okay. All right.
So motion to authorize town manager to submit and sign an application for the footbridge.
Raise grant.
Raise grant.
What was the final word you hit there?
And, and to execute a letter of intent.
And to execute a letter of intent.
And further subject to further negotiation with the Craft Group.
And further subject to further negotiations with the Craft Group.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all those in, oh, we're going, do we have to take a roll call for this one? No, if we had gone the other way, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not going to be very extensive.
We, uh, motion to, motion to adjourn. Well, it's funny, funny, just I logged out and I was like, was there anything else that, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.